Welcome to tonight's Brandon City Council Candidate Forum. We are taking precautionary measures by broadcasting the forum via Facebook Live Tonight, so thank you for all tuning in. I'm Carmen Doherty and I'll be your moderator for the evening. This forum is jointly sponsored by the Brandon Valley Area Chamber of Commerce and the Brandon Valley Journal. Tonight's forum provides our candidates an opportunity to publicly present their views, opinions, and qualifications for running for City Council. Our candidates this evening, TJ Cameron on my right and Jack Parliament on my left. Tonight's format will proceed as followed. First, each of our candidates will be allowed up to two minutes to give their introduction statement. We have a timekeeper seated here tonight that will keep candidate responses to the time allotted. Following opening remarks, in rotating order, the candidates will then respond to a series of questions prepared by the Chamber and the Journal. Candidates will have up to three minutes to respond to each of these questions. We will then ask questions submitted prior to tonight's forum, allowing the same three-minute time limitations for responses. Finally, we will allow each candidate two minutes to give their closing statement. In addition to Facebook Live Tonight, the forum will also be broadcast on Alliance Communications' Local Channel 18 for basic subscribers and Channel 21 for digital subscribers at 7:00 PM this Saturday and Sunday, March 28th and March 29th. This video will also be available on the Chamber's YouTube channel as soon as we can get it posted. Now, let's begin with opening statements. You each have two minutes. And we'll start with TJ first.
Good evening and thank you for hosting this event tonight. It's greatly appreciated. I have been a resident of Brandon for about 10 years. I grew up in Brookings, so South Dakota native. My wife was born and raised in Brandon. We have two young kids. My wife's Caitlin, she's originally a Reuben, so of Houston Speedway and amongst other names in the community. We have two young sons, a four-year-old and a year and a half, so our hands are full at home. And I'm vested in Brandon's future here, as I'm vested in my kid's future, who I plan to raise in Brandon. So, I love everything about Brandon. I believe I can bring a lot of strategic skills to our council. And as many of you know, I have been committed to this process for the last several years. I did run for council two years ago, and I've been committed to serving the community ever since. My experience includes, I'm currently the Director of Regional Operations for Profile, which is owned by Sanford Health. I have Vice President experience of a small retail company, including board meeting experience and large-scale budgeting and strategic planning. I also am a strong believer in youth engagement. I believe it makes communities successful. I believe it keeps positive futures for the community. And I also promise to be conservative with your tax dollar and treat it as my own. And I just ask for your vote this evening. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the Brandon Chamber of Commerce and the Brandon Valley Journal for sponsoring this event tonight. In light of the recent developments of the coronavirus and COVID-19, unfortunately, events like this are getting more and more difficult to hold. Limiting the number of people that are attending this event and going with Facebook Live and other venues was a good decision. With that, I would like to remind everyone that this virus is no joke. We all need to do our part to stop the spread. Recently, Governor Noem said that this could peak in May or early June. That means we have a long road to hold. Please continue to practice social distancing. And when you can, support the local businesses. You can always call in and get your orders and have them either delivered or you can pick them up. With that all said, a little bit about myself. I've lived in the Brandon Valley School District for 40-plus years. I recently retired from the DNI Railroad as their president. Retired in July 1st. I served on the South Dakota Railroad Board, which was an appointment by Governor Brown. And then I served on the Board of the American Shoreline Association headquartered in Washington, DC. On both boards and as President of the DNI, had fiduciary responsibility, so I'm very familiar with multi-million dollar budgets. Running for the City Council because I just want to be a voice of reason on the council. I've always had the desire to get more involved in public service, and now I have that opportunity to do so. I've seen Brandon grow from a small community to over 10,000 people, and we're all fortunate to call Brandon home. I just plan to use my experiences and business acumen to provide leadership on the council. Thank you.
Thank you TJ and Jack. Now we will move on to prepared questions. Each candidate will have three minutes to respond. The first question is, TJ, what motivates you to want to become a City Council member? What particular skills or experiences qualify you to serve as a City Council member?
Thank you. You know, as I stated earlier in my opening comments, a big motivating factor for myself to run for council is that, you know, I have two young sons here. My wife and I chose Brandon as the place to raise our family. And I'm invested in this community as much as I'm invested in my children's future. So, I promise that I will definitely be a great strategic planner for this community, focus on smart decisions for our growth, take a conservative approach to your tax dollars. And my specific skill set that I believe qualifies me for this position is I've held numerous roles throughout my career, from area managers in retail to entrepreneurial experience. I personally have had businesses that have failed. I've had businesses that have been successful. And I am a current business owner of Brandon Fireworks, just outside of the city limits here. My wife recently purchased the Pickle Barrel in Sioux Falls, so we understand the impact for small business owners and small community growth. And I also have large-scale corporate budgeting experience from my roles as Vice President of a small retail chain that was 200 stores nationwide. In addition to that, I'm currently the Director of Regional Operations at Sanford Health for Profile. Multi-million dollar budgets are within my skill set. I ran a payroll budget alone in my last role of $7 million, which is equivalent to our entire, nearly our entire city budget on an annual basis. And strategic planning, execution, and making smart decisions has been a part of my history and my professional career. So, thank you.
All right, Jack. Same question. What motivates you to want to become a City Council member? And what particular skills or experiences qualify you to serve as a City Council member?
Well, first of all, I just want to provide some leadership on the council. And we have numerous infrastructure needs, and we need leadership on the council to evaluate and prioritize those needs. That's just plain and simple why I'd like to get involved and serve on the council. Particular skill set and experiences, I know how to run a successful business. Served as President of the DNI there for 20 years. I've seen it grow from a small railroad to a large regional success story. We went through a lot of pitfalls, floods, bridges being demolished, and then we had to rebuild. And then we also grew the business very successfully. One of my strengths is the ability to develop business opportunities. I've overseen these multi-million dollar budgets most of my career on boards. And sometimes you have to make some tough decisions. They're not always the easy ones to make, but sometimes you just have to do it for the good of the, in this case, the good of the community. So, my past experiences leave me well qualified to serve on the council. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jack. And as number two, in your view, TJ, what has the city done well over the last two to three years? And what has the city done poorly that you would change?
Well, I believe Brandon's a great community. As I said earlier, my wife and I chose to raise our family here, and we choose Brandon as the place we want to live. So, first of all, I want to recognize Brandon and the leadership of Brandon for presenting such a great community. We're a leader in the state in small towns. And in my past experience, I have visited numerous, numerous small towns. In my last role, I had nearly 100 stores in small towns similar to Brandon and made many connections, and we stand out. So, first of all, that's the positive. What I think has done well in the last two to three years is the city has reacted well to, reacted quickly to community feedback and things that have become a priority from the residents. What I think that I'd like to not necessarily change, but what I'd like to bring forward is a voice for the residents. My ward in particular, I'd like to represent their needs. And in addition to that, I think one thing that we can improve on is strategic planning. If we look at our, we do have a 30-year plan as a city, but if we look at, you know, five, 10, and 15 years out, I do believe that a few of the negative things that have happened in social media over the last several, you know, last couple of years, we may have been ahead of that, and we may have been able to keep that out of, you know, out of the media. Things often become very important to the community when it impacts them directly. And I think that we could have been a little bit more ahead of the curve on our infrastructure planning. Obviously, there's a lot more to community and building a city than just infrastructure needs, but as we grow, we do have to plan for that. So, I believe that my strategic planning skills from my roles in small companies as a business owner of multiple businesses, as well as my Vice President role at a large retail, or small retail company that was growing fast, we often had to make plans three, five, seven, and 10 years out. And that included, you know, impacts with the board and meetings with the board. So, I believe that, as well as my budgeting and my ability to help execute plans, could help speed the pace at which we strategically plan and execute for the future of Brandon. Thank you.
All right. And Jack, in your view, what has the city done well over the last two to three years? And what has the city done poorly that you would change?
Well, I think the city has done well, working with public-private partnerships, for instance, the Hockey Association. I think that's a good model moving forward. Developing industrial building sites, like the new Roe Vang site and the Corson area. Over the years, the Corson area has grown exponentially. The Roe Vang site looks to be a great site, and we need those things to continue the growth of our community. And we need continued improvement in the streets and the park system. And I think so far, the city's done well, but we can do more. What could be done, or has been done poorly, or that I would change? I can't say that anything has been done poorly that I would change. Unfortunately, there has been a lot of misinformation that did get posted on social media concerning our water. We do need to address our future water needs, and leadership on this issue is going to be critical for our long-term needs.
Thanks, Jack. All right. And TJ, what are two to three needs that must be priorities for our city in your opinion? And why do you see these as needs?
Well, one thing I'd like to speak to is immediately, I do believe that our city needs to gear up to help support our small businesses. I know that the Chamber has done a great job already during the COVID-19 epidemic of bringing awareness to the community to support our local businesses. I believe as city leadership, we need to also quickly manifest a plan to help support our local businesses. Our small businesses in Brandon cannot go, many of them cannot go 30, 60, or 90 days without revenue. So, I think getting a plan together as a community quickly to support them in the short term is very, very important. And I do believe that I have some great ideas to assist with that as a small business owner myself. In the long term, two to three needs that I believe are very important for the future of Brandon. Number one, as I've continued to comment on strategic planning. We're a fast-growing community in the state of South Dakota, and we have to get ahead of many things such as our infrastructure needs. That's one thing that I feel like we have done a great job reacting to and that we're catching up on now, but I believe we could have gotten a little ahead of it, and I'd love to help us get ahead of it with strategic planning and execution for our future. Another big focus and priority of mine that I think is important to all residents in Brandon is youth engagement. So, as I've traveled throughout many small communities in the United States in my previous roles, one thing that sets the difference apart between very successful and a positive city, low crime, things like that, and some of the, as I've spoken with city leaders in these communities, and one of the things that they've struggled with is an engaged youth. And we have a great school system in Brandon, but many of our residents have to ship their children over to Sioux Falls if they want to be involved in engagement activities such as arts or sports, things like that. So, I think youth engagement as a priority for us in the future will just help outline and continue to make Brandon great in the future and keep our youth engaged in a positive way, which contribute positive to the future of any community. Thank you.
All right. And Jack, what are two to three needs that must be priorities for our city in your opinion? And why do you see these as needs?
Well, I've mentioned water. I've mentioned parks and street improvements, along with business development. So, those are actually four different things that I think are priorities. But there's other needs that will come up and are important to the growth of the community as well. We can provide our residents with good, clean water. We can expand our parks. We can repair and maintain our streets. And we can develop these new business opportunities, along with supporting the existing businesses. TJ made a good point. We need to support our local businesses right now, as I mentioned earlier, too. When looking at these infrastructure needs, my past tells me that, you know, there's tough decisions that have to be made. You have to prioritize. You'd love to do all these infrastructure things, but you just can't at times when the money's not there. One way to raise more money is to develop more business. More and more business drives development and derives income for the city to do these things that we all want to get done. It's just making sure that our priorities are straight, and I feel I have the leadership skills to do so.
All right. Thank you, Jack. And the following questions came from residents in written forum prior to tonight's forum. Again, candidates will be allowed up to three minutes to respond. Our first question is, are you satisfied with the current plan to address Brandon's infrastructure and water needs? Please explain, TJ.
So, specifically to the subject of water, this has been an ongoing topic for several years in Brandon. It was top of mind as I tried to get involved running for council just a little over two years ago. And again, I think one of the things that we could continue to improve on is strategic planning. So, to answer the question specifically, am I satisfied? I don't think that, from my nature and from my history, that I'm satisfied with any solution, but raising the bar constantly. One of the things that I believe we do need to do is, even though we're currently reacting to some of our infrastructure needs, I think that's an important part of the factor, but we need to spend about 70% of our time looking at the future and strategic planning, because if we continue to focus 70% of our time on reaction, we're going to continue this cycle for an extended period of time. So, no, I'm not 100% satisfied. However, I do believe that the city has done great things in reaction to our immediate needs, but I do believe that we can raise the bar. And I do believe that strategic planning and looking forward will help us get ahead of the curve for the next several city councils. I'd love to see the next several city councils, the next decades of residents, set up for success, so that when we're doing reaction, reaction is more in terms of things like the COVID-19 reaction. Nobody could have predicted that, but we definitely could have predicted our infrastructure needs and gotten ahead of that five to 10 years ago. So, I'd love to see us do that today.
Thank you, TJ. And Jack, are you satisfied with the current plan to address Brandon's infrastructure and water needs? Please explain.
Well, unfortunately, I think we should have, and this goes years back, I think we should have gotten hooked up to the Lewis and Clark system. But that is definitely water under the bridge, pun intended. We can't look past, look back at past mistakes. We need to look forward as to what needs to be done from today for the next, probably the next generation even. We can do better, and I think with the right leadership, we will do better.
Thank you, Jack. All right. TJ, with fireworks needing a clearance of 150-plus feet, where do you stand on this ballot item? Are you for or against allowing aerial fireworks in the city limits? And please explain.
Thank you for the question. So, first of all, I want to be very transparent that I'm the owner of Brandon Fireworks, just outside of the city limits. And obviously, I have a bias or somewhat vested personally interested in fireworks. That being said, there's nothing more important than the safety of my customers or the safety of our residents. So, to answer your question, when the city proposed a total ban on fireworks other than sparklers, snakes, smokeballs, which I consider a mostly ban, I did try to work with the council to come up with a common sense compromise. As a fireworks owner, I'm an expert, or nearly an expert in this field, and I do not believe that we should be able to shoot things like artillery shells, otherwise known as mortars, that do require 150 feet. Also, rockets, things with a stick, have the tendency to tip over. But I do believe that there is a compromise. However, currently, the subject on the ballot is to allow any and all consumer fireworks on July 3rd and 4th. So, I think we went from two years ago allowing everything to nearly a complete ban. Tried to work with the council and the city to come up with a common sense compromise, but a resident brought forward a petition, and I 100% believe that we need to listen to the residents, and I think the vote will be very telling on the 14th of whether or not our residents wanted fireworks. I'm not sure that we represented their needs, or their needs or requests, and the reason I say that is I have thousands of Brandon residents that are customers of mine. And I think that there were a few people that had some specific personal interests in the reasons that they may have voted for the ban on the council. And I think that even me, as a vested business owner, I have to listen to the residents. So, in this particular subject, I'd have to recuse myself from a vote. That said, I promise that I would always survey the residents, survey my ward, and vote in their favor of their best interests versus my personal interests. So, that gives you a little explanation on what I think about the fireworks. There are a few items that I do believe should be, as I stated earlier, that should be restricted. And what I would encourage the public, because I have a feeling that we're going to pass the ordinance to allow fireworks again, because I know how popular and, again, how many residents purchase fireworks from my store, which is, of course, my favorite holiday of the year. Always has been. My family's been in the business for three generations. But even if it does pass, I would encourage residents to exercise the safety recommendations, including 150-foot clearances, and specifically on large-scale items such as mortars/artillery shells or rockets. There's plenty of family display fireworks that you can do from your driveway that still produce a great show, that are much safer from a short distance, such as the cakes, the square things you light one time. They go one after another. They put a really great show in the air, much safer than the rockets with sticks or the mortars that could take over. And I would encourage our residents to follow those safety standards and/or come out, and I'd be happy to educate you on those standards as well. Thanks.
Thank you, TJ. And Jack, with fireworks needing a clearance of 150-plus feet, where do you stand on this ballot item? Are you for or against allowing aerial fireworks in the city limits? Please explain.
Well, I'm surprised TJ was for it. No, that's a given. And personally, I love fireworks. I've blown up my share, that's for sure. But this issue really does need to be settled by the vote, by the people. So, I'm very glad that it's on the ballot. There are a couple of issues that I do see with the ballot initiative. As TJ said, the ability to shoot artillery shells all the way up until 11:00 PM, and when most 4th of July celebrations are on a school or a work night, that seems to be a bit much. So, I think that is something that will probably need to be addressed. Safety is obviously a concern of many residents that are not in favor of it. They're fearful of damage to their properties, and rightly so. I understand that. And that may be also something that needs to be addressed. So, my official stance is that if the residents approve these celebrations, I'm all for it. But I do think that we may have to address some of the issues that could be forthcoming at a later date.
All right. Thank you, Jack. So, besides our schools, what items, two of them, do you believe top the list of things that draw new residents or businesses to our community? And in your opinion, what can we do to get the word out to more about those two items?
Schools, obviously, number one. As you've said, aside from our schools, we get a lot of public recognition for our schools, and I think that's something we need to continue to leverage. We do a great job, and it draws many, many residents. So, it's very difficult for me to eliminate that as one of the top draws to Brandon. But as I look down the things that helped us select Brandon for our future, is Brandon's a very safe place to live. We have a great police force here, which we've had a great, we had a great police chief who recently retired and did a fantastic job. We have a great new police chief in place, and frankly, we have a great police force as a whole. So, it doesn't just take the police to keep the community safe. I do believe that Brandon, even though we're growing quick, also has a small-town feel. And I do believe that our neighbors and residents watch out for one another. I can't count the number of times where I've been on Facebook and seen a video of something that was suspicious, or an alert of there was a vehicle that approached my child on their way home from school. And we bring that to the attention of other residents, and I think that's powerful. I think that that definitely deters, you know, non-do-gooders, the criminals, from being in our community. So, I think we need to keep that going forward. So, I think the safeness of Brandon is one thing that really draws us. The other thing that I think is great, not only for businesses but also for residents, is, you know, we're that small town with that small-town feel. We're very, very clean and upbeat. I consider us a leader. There's other communities in South Dakota that I could compare us to, which I don't want to name names, but I think that every resident in Brandon would probably be able to identify them. We're the better, we're the better version of some of the communities that are in South Dakota, and I think that we have to give credit to that. We're also very, very close to a larger city. So, things that may not be accessible to other small towns, and there are other great small towns in South Dakota. I grew up in Brookings, which I believe is a great small town. But we're in such close proximity, I do believe that that's a major draw. We're far enough away where we're able to keep that small-town feel, but we're close enough where everything is accessible. As far as business draw, I think the incredible speed at which we're growing is a great draw for small businesses, and I would encourage any business to take a look at Brandon. Restaurant choices, shopping choices. And I think our Chamber is very active in our community and does a great job promoting small, local businesses. So, I would encourage any business outside of Brandon to take another look at Brandon, because in five years, if you're not here, you'll wish you would have been.
Thank you, TJ. And Jack, besides our schools, what two items do you believe top the list of things that draw new residents or businesses to our community? And in your opinion, what can we do to get the word out to more about those two items?
Well, obviously, the school system is one of the best, if not the best, in the state. I've known that for years. My kids grew up in the school system, and my daughter teaches in the school system, and I have grandkids in the school system. So, as a Brandon resident, I'm very proud of that. We've been very successful. resident, I'm very proud of that. We've been very successful also with developing and growing businesses out here. The Chamber, over the years, has done very well. The Development Corp. We can do better. We can do more. And we need to keep getting that word out there that we are open for business, and we want your business. We want manufacturing businesses. We want restaurants. We want everything. So bring it to Brandon. We're a great community. You know, our standard of living, that's always one of the first things that people look for if they're looking for a new community, is great. We have a good park system. We have good sports opportunities for the kids. We have good programs for adults and meet-in, and a great retirement system just right outside of the city, Indian City, for the retired folks. So I think we have a lot going for us, and we just need to continue to get the word out that we are here. We want your business, and come join our community.
All right. Thank you, Jack. And TJ, will you continue to support the funding the city gives to the Brandon Valley Area Chamber of Commerce and the Brandon Development Foundation? Please be specific as to why or why not.
I think that question is pretty simple. Absolutely. I think any funding that we can invest smart, so as I said, I'll be a guardian of your tax dollar as if it were my own, because it is my own. It's also my children's tax dollars in the future. But I think smart investment into growth, business opportunities, I know many, many residents want to see, you know, more selection, shopping selections, restaurant selections, entertainment selections. And being so close to a little bit larger city, it is difficult to compete. But I believe that those investments in things such as the Development Foundation, as well as the Chamber of Commerce, are smart investments for our future. It's smart investments for choices for our residents. It's smart investment for growth. You know, as fast as we grow with our residential build-outs, and we're continuing to try to keep up with our infrastructure needs, as we grow as residents, we're going to want to see these choices and to stay ahead of other small communities, or to stay ahead of other suburbs, if you will, even though we're talking small towns that surround Brandon. There's a lot of choices in small, great towns right around Sioux Falls. And I want to see Brandon be number one. And I think those smart investments into the future of small business and choices for our residents is a highly, is a great ROI, great return on investment.
Thank you TJ. And Jack, will you continue to support the funding the city gives to the Brandon Valley Area Chamber of Commerce and the Brandon Development Foundation? Please be specific as to why or why not.
Well, that's an easy yes. I've talked a lot about business opportunities, and in one way you can get those business opportunities is through your Chamber and through your business development corporations and your leads within that. Minnehaha County also has a great economic development system that Brandon has worked with for years. So it's a real simple yes, and that is how we have to continue to gain business and grow our community.
All right. Thank you, Jack. And TJ, what rail user businesses would you like to see in the Roe-Bang Business Park, which is located north of Corson Industrial Park?
Can you repeat the first part of that? I caught the second part.
Sure. What rail user businesses would you like to see in the Roe-Bang Business Park?
So if we're talking about rail user-specific, I think we're very fortunate, and I must say that Jack's probably going to be an expert in this subject. But I would like to say that we're very fortunate to have rail access in Brandon as a community. Not every community does. So as often as we might hear a train, or as often as there might be a stop on our commute to work, I think the value of bringing industrial and manufacturing businesses and employers to town by having rail access is a huge win for our community. So what types? You know, definitely lumber-related is a big one. Consumer goods is a big one. Manufacturing is a big one. So I'd love to see things in those categories, and I will continue to spend time educating myself on what businesses would make the most sense for Brandon in a rail access area. And I promise the residents that that is something I'll look into.
Thank you TJ. And Jack, what rail user businesses would you like to see in the Roe-Bang Business Park?
In the Roe-Bang site up there, you know, there is somewhat limited rail access. It can be brought in there rather easily. You're not going to get a huge shipper in there that's going to employ 40 or 50 people with a rail site, similar to what's up there. But there are numerous opportunities for businesses that need the two to three carloads per week type thing. Those businesses are lots of times considered transload businesses, where they need a site to offload or to load rail cars. There's just a plethora of different types of businesses that can fit that bill. I've worked with a lot of different businesses and developed sites very similar. And I think Brandon has an opportunity, not only with the BNSF at the Roe-Bang site, but with the Ellison Eastern, as they build and rebuild the line through town. I think there's also other opportunities for the city with the Ellison Eastern, and of course, the BNSF.
All right. Thank you, Jack. And along that line, what strategy would you use to endorse and attract these businesses or industries?
I think attracting business and industries to Brandon is going to be much wider. As, again, I'll defer to the expert in the room, but Jack mentioned there are some limited access. So I'll do my part in educating myself on that subject. But knowing that there's some limited access, I do think that we need to offer things such as tax incentives to attract businesses that otherwise might go to the rail access that passes through Sioux Falls, or other small communities along the rail. But from attracting businesses as a whole, I think we need to look at the bigger picture. I know that many of our residents would love to see, again, more entertainment choices, more dining options, more shopping options, more service-related options. And I think those are also industries that we could make smart investments in from a tax incentive basis. Programs to attract second locations, so there's successful businesses already in Sioux Falls. Why not come to Brandon and open your next location here? And we do have some funding and grants available through our Developmental Foundation. But anything that we can do to encourage business growth in Brandon is going to be a big payoff for our residents as a whole.
Thank you TJ. And Jack, what strategy would you use to endorse or to attract these businesses and industries?
The main strategy you can use with attracting businesses like this, rail customers in particular, is explaining the access that's available, explaining the service. Many times they don't understand how the rail site may be served. That's important. Working with the Development Corporation, working with the city, and working with the local railroad to address those needs of those customers that are looking at particular sites. You can use incentives. You can use TIF financing. You can use, you can get the railroad involved, and they can many times provide some incentives. But the main thing is just to talk to them, be honest, let them know the opportunities that are there, and how you can work with them to design a site that works for them.
Thank you, Jack. And continuing on that same line, how much assistance do you expect the Burlington Northern Santa Fe to offer to help locate businesses into the Roe-Bang Business Park?
Well, I think that railroads benefit a great deal from businesses along the rail. It just makes sense. So any kind of partnership that we can form between the city, between also perhaps involving the county, even in the matter of involving the state, because as we know, you know, rail passes through many, many states. So I think there's a lot to what we could expect from who's going to be involved. That said, I, again, don't know all the ins and outs of the rail business, but it's certainly something that I will continue to focus on. And if it's important to our residents, then it'll become an important priority to me. And that said, I think there should be a great partnership. I know grants are available federally for rail projects. Matter of fact, I know there's a current federal grant, doesn't necessarily involve attracting businesses, but on upgrades to our rail system and safety, crosswalks, and different things that could improve the rail system around Brandon that we need to take a really hard look at. But from the, what do I expect them to invest or partnership, I will definitely educate myself on that. And if it's an important topic to the residents on the other side of the interstate over in Corson, I definitely will make it a priority. But they also may have other priorities that we need to focus on with business growth, not just on the rail. And that's something that I do believe that I can bring great benefit to from my past experience as a business owner, corporate leader, and a resident of Brandon.
Thank you TJ. And Jack, how much assistance do you expect the Burlington Northern Santa Fe to offer to help locate businesses in the Roe-Bang Business Park?
Well, if elected to the council, I can get BNSF to the table, plain and simple. I know the local train master, and I know people in Fort Worth. So that's an easy one for me. It's just making a few calls, and we can get the right people to the table to, usually to work with that business owner that is looking to invest on a site in Brandon. Marmon Energy is a great example, as well as others in that area, where they worked with the Brandon Development Corporation, Minnehaha County, and with the railroad to develop the site up there. And they've grown into a very, very good local employer, and we're lucky to have them there. So those are just some of the ways that I would address it.
All right. Thank you, Jack. Okay, next question. TJ, please share your employment history over the last 10 years.
Well, thank you. Be happy to expand on my employment history. So looking back over the last 10 years, specifically, I was a store manager for Target. So ran Target stores that varied in volume from 30 million. I ran the 17th largest Target in the country at the time. There were 1,700 Targets nationwide. That was on the East Coast of Maryland, and that was nearly a store that, post-remodel, was nearly 100 million. So my payroll budget alone was nearly double what our entire city budget is. In addition, there was expense control, future planning, things of that nature. Also been a business owner, so many of you know that my wife and I purchased the bowling alley when we first moved, although it ended up not working out for us in the long run. We'll continue to invest in Brandon. We'll continue to be entrepreneurial. So we did run the Brandon Bowling Alley for a few years. Unfortunately, again, didn't work out, but it's even more important. It's just an example of why it's so important to support local businesses. I know how many residents miss having a bowling alley here in Brandon. And my wife and I grew up bowlers and really wanted to keep that going. When we purchased that business, it was already in a struggling state. And although we did our best we could to keep it here, it unfortunately didn't work out for us. But that doesn't mean we won't invest again. And I think it highlights the reason that I am so, that small business in Brandon is such a priority for me. I've been there. I know what it is to struggle through a small business. I know what it is to be successful. I also own Brandon Fireworks, which is a seasonal fireworks business. We're just outside of the city limits, but I contribute on a large basis to several nonprofits here in town, the Hockey Association, the Fire Department, the Food Bank, other organizations through Brandon Fireworks. And I'm proud of that. And Brandon Fireworks is proud of that, being a contributor to our community. From there, I've done specialty retail. I was an area manager for Route 21, which was a small teen clothing, growing super fast. When I joined the company, it was nearing 1,000 stores. And I was at that company for about three years. And when I left, they were nearing about 1,200, 1,300 stores. Did see that they were having some financial struggles, was the reason for the job change. After that, I was the vice president of a small company that started out about 100 stores when I joined the company. And over the course of about three years that I was there, I helped grow that company from 100 stores to nearing 200 locations. That particular experience alone gave me great resources to bring to the city of Brandon. I met city leaders, mayors, city council people. When we grand opened in these small towns, I made it a point to invite leadership of small communities. And I have a great network all over the country in small towns, bigger and smaller than Brandon. And as I mentioned earlier, my current role is Regional Director of Operations at Sanford Health in the Profile Division. So I have a vast, wide range of experience that I think would be very, very valuable to our council.
Thank you TJ. And Jack, please share your employment history over the last 10 years.
Well, that's simple. Over the last 10 years, I was president of the DNI Railroad in Sioux Falls, which is owned by LG Everest. Our trains ran from Dow Rapids to Sioux City. Most people have seen the Long Rock trains through Sioux Falls. But we also served numerous businesses down in the Hudson and Haywarden area. Boett had a plant, has a plant in Hudson. And Suland Energy also has a plant there. There's some net terminal in Hudson, excuse me, in Haywarden, and numerous other small transload operations down there. And then we interchanged with the three Class Ones in Sioux City, which are the BNSF, the Union Pacific, and the Canadian National. My role there was president of the DNI, and I had been president for 19 of my 20 years with the company. Prior to that, I worked for other railroads. Started out as a switchman in the yard, became a conductor, an engineer, and then I went into management, and eventually into the role that I recently retired from last July.
All right. Thank you, Jack. In last year, the council adopted a code of conduct with penalties. Do you support that action? Please be specific as to why or why not, TJ?
I absolutely do. I think any governing body should have a strong code of conduct. We are representatives of our city. We're representatives of our residents. And when we're on stage, we have to be cognizant and aware of what our words mean to everybody outside of Brandon that may be considering moving here, to our current residents that live here, to our legacy residents that helped make Brandon great, to our new residents that are uncertain but chose Brandon as a great place to live. So I do think a code of conduct's very important, specifically to the fact of we shouldn't have to have one, because I believe that people elected to represent our residents, you know, should come to the council with a positive professional demeanor, and think about everything that is said. That said, to make it formal, I'm all for, and I do support. And I do know, just to address, I think, where maybe this question came from, you know, there was a lot of negativity in Facebook and other social media over the last few years in Brandon. And although I think there was definitely a call for change, and things that we need to get ahead of the game in, for instance, the strategic planning, I think could have gotten ahead of a lot of that negativity. The way that the messages were delivered definitely should have aligned with a code of conduct, and I think that's what prompted our city to adopt a code of conduct. Our reputation as a community is always on stage. People from coast to coast choose Brandon as a place to live. People from coast to close look at South Dakota and choose Sioux Falls, because they are great, growing communities that are often- that are often highlighted in the top 100 places to live and the top 50 new and upcoming communities. So I think we have to be aware of that reputation. And just because we need to be aware of a reputation doesn't mean that we can't come to council and differ in opinions or represent our ward's desires. I think that often, when we're up here, maybe it's a little bit too much, yes, yes, but I do believe it's okay to differ an opinion, but you got to bring those opinions in a respectful manner, and you have to compromise. Compromise is a big part of city leadership. Compromise for the best interests of all residents in every ward. So I think that that's something that will be a strong trait of mine on council. I'm courageous and not afraid to voice the opinions and the needs of my ward, but I'm also very strategic and lots of experience in compromise. And I understand how to look at issues from both sides, take that data, and apply it to the decisions, and negotiate what's best for my ward and the residents, the future of Brandon.
Thank you, TJ. And Jack, last year, the council adopted a code of conduct with penalties. Do you support that action? Please be specific as to why or why not.
Of course I support it. These days, with everything that's out there, you just, you have to have those rules for people that serve on these boards and in public service. We all hear stories, seems like every week, of corruption and things like that, and unfortunately, that's out there. And we're not insulated from those things in South Dakota. So yes, of course, I support those things. Other rules that apply to boards and council are the public meeting laws, the conflict of interest disclosures, all those are important, and we need to support those. It's a simple thing that, as part of public service, is the fact that you're going to be under the microscope at times, and I welcome that, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity.
Thank you, Jack. And TJ, should you find yourself in the minority on a council decision, will you use social media in an effort to champion your minority opinion?
I think that our community and Brandon leadership has done, first of all, a great job of adopting to our residents wanting additional lines of communication. Several years ago, when I first became interested in serving the community, you know, social media was looked at as, well, you know, come to the meeting. But as I look around the room, you know, there's seating for 25, and I've seen, I've been at council meetings over the last several years where, you know, there's been standing room only. So not everybody can show up to a council meeting. So I do believe that we need to deliver our communication to the community in multiple ways. The Brandon Valley Journal does a great job of delivering information to our community. The Chamber of Commerce does a great job of delivering information to our community. But there are residents that spend a lot of time on social media, and do I believe it's a place for appropriate discussion? Yes. Do I also acknowledge that things get out of hand on social media from time to time? Often, often they do. So what I would say is, if I were in the minority, if I were in the minority, I would be advocating that minority view because it is what my ward wants, and I wouldn't make that decision by myself. I would talk to the residents within my ward, I'd talk to the community. If there's a reason that I'm in the minority, then it's because my ward has an interest in that topic that maybe, may not be being seen. So certainly, I would encourage people through all types of communication faucets, including social media from my ward and throughout the city. If this is an important topic, come to our meetings, you know, email other council members, talk to your representative. I think those are positive ways that we can leverage social media, and I think those are positive ways that we can say, hey, if you feel like you're in the minority, then come forward and speak to your representatives and tell them your desires. So yeah, I think it's a great forum for encouraging people to come forward. Certainly wouldn't use it for any reason to advocate or leverage against any other member of council. I think that's a terrible use of social media. I think we're here at our meetings and even behind the scenes, we're able to discuss topics and compromise. I think the city leadership here has done a great job with compromise. So I definitely wouldn't use it for any negative way of influencing views. Instead, more of a positive encouragement for people to come forward.
Thank you. And Jack, should you find yourself in the minority on a council decision, will you use social media in an effort to champion your minority opinion?
I would not use social media to air grievances, and that's what has occurred in the past. Social media is a great tool for the city to get the word out, to let people know of what's happening. And I think the city's doing a good job with that. Mayor Lungberg has just put out a couple notices on the COVID-19 pandemic. I think those were well put and well done. That's good use of social media. It's not a place to air grievances. We can use it in a positive way. When it gets used in a negative way, it puts a bad, it puts the city in a bad light, and it also puts our residents in a bad light at times, too.
Thank you, Jack. And TJ, what is your opinion of the negative and not factual Facebook sites in our area, i.e. the dirt?
Well, anything non-factual that ends up on social media is unfortunately terrible for any community. You know, there's certainly, certainly communities out there, I think of, you know, Flint, Michigan. I want to bring that to the attention of the residents because the reputation that that community now has was greatly due to social media. Now that said, there were very, there were several truthful and factual things that were put out about Flint, but we lived that reputation for a very long time. So do I think that there, the certain groups should come forward in a more positive manner? Absolutely. Can we completely control social media? No. Social media is a venue for people to express their opinion. Anytime that, as people know, or if you don't know, there was recently an arrest due to falsifying information on one of the Facebook groups and falsifying water test documents. So I think that that was a very bold and strong statement to pursue that kind of, you know, negativity. So I think that that was a move that our city and the state, for that matter, needed to make. So I think it's okay to, you know, say your opinion on social media, but to falsify any kind of factual data is terrible for any community. And I would just encourage anybody behind that to think about the reputation of your community. If you want to see change, there's much more positive ways that you can advocate your opinion. You can elect new representatives to council that want to advocate for your best interests. You can speak to any council member, whether it be in your ward or not in your ward. You can attend the meetings, you can put out positive, you can put out messages on social media that advocate for a difference of opinion or advocate for change, but you can do that in a positive manner, even if it is a controversial matter. I think it's okay off, from time to time, to put that out there, to seek the opinion of the rest of the residents and bring it to fruition and bring awareness to an issue. But it definitely needs to be done in a positive and factual manner. Falsifying documents or information is absolutely unacceptable, unethical, and is terrible for any community.
All right. Thank you. And Jack, what is your opinion of the negative and not factual Facebook sites in our area, i.e. the dirt?
Well, as TJ mentioned, when a site like that is used to post incorrect and downright detrimental information, the water reports, then it's just not, just not a, a place, it's just not a place that you can use, and the dirt needs to realize that if they truly want to be a voice for the minority, they need to screen what they are posting, they need to be truthful with their posts, and, you know, try to be a positive site for us to grow the city. Now, they would prefer to be the alternative, and a little bit of that is okay, but when it gets stretched to the point where someone posts something that's been falsified, that is definitely over the line. TJ and I both agree on that one, and I'm glad to see that they are, that individual is being prosecuted as well. So do I support their posts all the time? No. Sometimes they're entertaining. That's plain and simple. But I look at them, I read them, and I was like, okay, really? I don't think anybody really believes this, but that's their opinion, and they're entitled to it.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions that came from Facebook? All right. Now we will allow up to a two-minute closing statement. TJ, go ahead and start.
You know, again, I want to thank the Brandon Valley Journal and Brandon Valley Chamber of Commerce for hosting tonight's event. I want to thank Jack for the great interaction and for wanting to represent our community probably equally as much as I do. And thank you for hosting this evening and moderating, I think you did a great job. So aside from the thanks, I just want to ask for your vote. I am very committed to this community. Again, I have children growing up within this community, and my wife and I chose Brandon. My wife's entire extended family, nearly, lives in Brandon. So we chose Brandon as a great place to live. I believe Brandon is a great community, and I just want to contribute to the future of Brandon. I believe that the skill set and the diversity that I have within my professional background, from small business ownership to large corporate leadership experience, is an invaluable asset to a small governing body. We have great residents that have lived here for many, many, many years, and I've only been here for nearing a decade, which is, I think, a strong amount of time. But, you know, I don't have the roots, you know, that Jack has in the community. I don't go back that far. But I promise you that there's no lack of commitment to the future of this community by only being here for the last 10 years. Public service is something that I've always wanted to be involved in, and I've staked my intentions in being involved in the future of Brandon. I think some key points is the strategic planning, is something that I've been saying for a couple of years now, that I believe I could bring a strong skill set to the council. Youth engagement is something that I think is extremely important, and business economic development, and knowing what it's like to be in the shoes of a small business owner is something where I've walked in those shoes, and I will, I'll bring those skills and I'll bring those desires and concerns and voice to the council.
Thank you. And Jack, your two-minute closing statement.
Well, first of all, thank you to Rachel and the chamber, Jill and the journal, and Carmen for moderating. Great job. I appreciate this opportunity, and I welcome the discussion. When I'm elected, I'll use my experience to provide leadership for our great city. We have priorities and issues to be resolved, but we also have a great community with a fabulous school system. We're growing business. We have energetic young families and proud older generations that will continue to make Brandon one of the best places to live. One thing I do want to encourage is for people to get out and vote. The city is opening up absentee voting, begins tomorrow. Make use of it, do your civic duty, and now you can do it in a safe environment. The city can and will provide a safe place to do so. Voting begins, like I say, tomorrow. The election is April 14th. Hopefully, everyone has voted by that date. Especially these days, we need to stay safe, and we need to make use of the absentee voting that's available to us. I appreciate your, would appreciate your vote anytime between now and April 14th, and looking forward to serving on the council. Thank you.
Thank you, TJ Cameron and Jack Parham. I'd once again like to thank the Brandon Valley Chamber and the Brandon Valley Journal for sponsoring tonight's forum. Remember to tell friends and neighbors who were not able to tune in tonight that the forum can be viewed on Alliance Communications' local channels at 7:00 PM on March 28th and March 29th. Also, please remember to vote on Tuesday, April 14th. The polls are open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Ward 1 voting will be right here at the city council chambers, and Ward 2 voting will be at the Brandon Fire Station, and Ward 3 voting will be at the Brandon Golf Course. Absentee voting has opened sooner than normal and can begin tomorrow. Once again, the best to each of you as candidates, and thanks to all who attended tonight's forum. Thank you. Good night.